Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board meeting of June 16th. I'll ask you to please rise for the pledge allegiance. And I'll ask Patricia Cantinari Fitzpatrick to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. First on the agenda is the minutes of May 12th. Any changes?
No.
No.
We're enthusiastic.
It's Monday.
And I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 12th.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask the Senator to begin on. She has something to say. How's these new microphones working, Paul?
Right.
Do you feel like I'm on The Price is Right or something with this thing like this?
They are very similar, right?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. For those of you who might not know who I am, I'm Senator Patricia Cantinari Fitzpatrick. I have the honor of representing the 9th Senate District, which includes Lindbrook. I wanted to just stop by and say hello because we've had a lot going on in Albany and I think it's important for the Board to know what things have gone on. The Senate finished their session this past Friday morning. I was just telling trustee Riordan how we finished at 4:30 a.m. Friday morning after working from 9 a.m. Thursday.
Sounds like one of our old board meetings.
Yeah, but I also feel like I'm a little too old for full, not an all-nighter, but nonetheless, we did. For those of you who might not have known, we passed a budget that was quite late. It was about six weeks late. By statute, by the Constitution, it's supposed to be passed by April 1st of each year. That did not happen. But we did pass a budget that was $254 billion, which represents a 50% increase from the fiscal year 2019. I will tell you that my colleagues and I, on the Republican side of the aisle, argued for a different path. We are in a state where it's not affordable for us to keep up with this because I don't know about anybody else here, but my salary hasn't gone up 50% since 2019. So it makes it impossible for us to keep up with that kind of pace. The six weeks late is very traumatic for our school districts because by law, they still need to submit their budgets and go out to vote for their budgets. And when they don't know what they're getting from the state, it makes it nearly impossible for them to really have a definite budget. So that's something that we've tried to encourage our colleagues on the other side of the aisle to make sure that we have an on-time budget. In 2020, I'm sure you may recall that we passed what has been commonly referred to as cashless bail, where we reduced the bail for, or eliminated bail, I should say, for the majority of crimes. And one of the other things that we did during that time was we changed discovery laws that are handcuffing police and DAs in prosecuting crimes. It requires a very, very short timeframe wherein DAs are returning documents to the defense side, and if you miss anything that is remotely related to the case, not necessarily relevant, the case gets dismissed on a technicality. So I, along with my DA from Nassau County, Annie Donnelly, we argued throughout the state, and all of the DAs argued for changes to the discovery laws. Unfortunately, that didn't make it to the budget to the extent that it should have made. We've also unfortunately seen a very large item in our budget of $10 million that is probably the most offensive and egregious thing I've ever seen, where taxpayer money is being set aside for the legal defense of any state employee who is prosecuted by the federal government, whether it is related or not related to their employment with the state. And we believe that this was geared toward Letitia James, our Attorney General, being prosecuted by the federal government for loan fraud, that they are now allowing taxpayer money to defend her in her private litigation. We again debated that for many hours. We opposed that, but unfortunately, it was part of the budget. So those are just a few of the highlights that I wanted to share. There are some good things in the budget. You know, we funded school meals for children. We have put in money for water, clean water. The MTA does unfortunately get a large amount of money, and we also have an increase in our MTA payroll tax. So those are a few things that have troubled me, but we will continue to advocate for those things and make sure that the next year, we get this a little bit better. I will tell you, at the end of the year, we passed a few things related to utilities, and utility costs in this area are just extremely high. And it's something that was commonly referred to as the New York Heat Act, which is banning natural gas and increasing utility costs at the expense of, you know, the climate. They want to, the agenda was to, you know, favor the climate and take care of our environment rather than consider the cost. And those are the things that, you know, as I said, we just can't seem to get our head around that affordability. Has to be a better thing for our constituents. I do want to say that my district office is always open if people have issues, if they need any assistance, any assistance with any kind of state agency. I wanted to share my office phone number, which is area code 516-766-8383. And my staff and I are always available to help because that's our job is to help the, you know, help the constituents. So I thank you again for your indulgence, allowing me to come here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, but I appreciate the opportunity to be able to address the residents.
Thanks for coming in. Anybody got any questions? Who's getting the food, the kids, when you say school kids are getting?
So it used to be that you had to qualify based on your income level, and now they're fully funding meals so that every child in school will be fed in public schools.
That's mandated to all the districts.
It is. Yeah. The funding is there, and they put it in the budget that that's the way it's supposed to be paid for.
Kids go hungry.
Yes.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Thank you again, Mayor. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Next on, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna have Elizabeth come up. You okay? Your father's coming with you?
Uh, no, sorry.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Canty from Troop 2168, and I am presenting my Gold Award project, which is the Coast Club. This is a run club for girls, and the mission of my club is to provide teenage girls and young women with a safe and supportive space to run. This club includes support for beginner runners, athletes, and casual runners to hone their abilities in an environment that encourages progress and focuses on mental health. And I have created some online spaces, particularly on Instagram and Strava, which is a running tracking app. And I'm hoping to expand to in-person meetings, and I have come to ask if I would be able to use the rec center for these meetings.
I have no problem with that.
No, it sounds like a great idea.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I just had one question. Do you have an idea of like how often you would be meeting or using it?
Yes. Approximately every two weeks. I plan to do regular bimonthly meetings for about an hour at a time, and then the rest would be like online.
Okay. So we'll have to get you in touch with Antonia.
Yeah. How long will these two bi-weekly meetings be going on for?
Hopefully into the fall until it gets, you know, too cold to run outside.
Okay.
But hopefully into the beginning of the school year, especially for younger students who are training for, you know, upcoming sports, or perhaps their sports are out of season, and they just want to keep up with their activities.
You know, I just came up with another question. Where are they gonna run? Bryce Park?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So now I think we got all the details, right?
I think so.
As I said, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you for coming in. Good luck.
Great job.
Yep. Good luck.
Next on the agenda is Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor Beach and Deputy Mayor Hoxhurst and trustees. It's so nice to be back. I'm Polly Talbot. I'm the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. We have so much going on. Michael couldn't be here tonight, so I'm stepping in. We have prom night. We're currently working on prom night, and we're really excited this year. This is our 25th prom night, and we're celebrating afterwards with a happy hour we're inviting all the parents to at LC Lane. But we have really grown in interesting ways. We now have the PTA moms are helping guide kids down the walkway, and then the chamber people take over and are guiding them down the street. So we're getting, it's nice that we're having the school in more, and we're also, at your suggestion a couple of years ago, the class advisors are helping to interview the kids because it was a little overwhelming for me at times. But, so it works out really well now, and we're really excited to have that happen. We've added, over the years, we've added balloon arches, and we'll have music. Christine Salamino is gonna be playing some nice background music. So, you know, we mix that up every now and then, and we thought maybe we were too loud at times with the music, so Christine plays like more background music, so it should be nice. So we're excited about that. We also are just placing the order for the electronic display board that's gonna be in the walkway. And with all of your approval, we have decided on what we're gonna get, and we're all excited about that as well. And it's gonna be a way for people to come, as they come down the walkway, they'll be able to check in with businesses, they'll be able to do the, take a picture of the QR code and go to the places and see. So it'll be really great. There'll be members' ads on there and things like that. So I think it's gonna be a really nice addition. It's something, as we were talking when we were with you, I have been wanting to do this since, I think, the year 1999, when I first joined the chamber. And at that point, it was the ones where you open the door and you have to stick in the piece of paper and then come back the next day and change it. So this is exciting because Lloyd Cryin, our web person, is gonna be able to do everything from home and upload everything, and it'll just be really nice, I think, for everyone. We're super excited about cruise nights this year. We've got, actually, I have, yes, I think you have one here, but this is, this year, we're gonna really, first of all, we're doing a lot of things to make it better and make more people want to come because it's gonna be really a lot of fun. We're not charging the cars. Last year, we charged them $5, and some of them whined about that, so we said, all right, we won't do that. We have a lot of sponsors who will be supporting our bands. We're gonna have live music every week, and we're gonna have things for the kids. Dance Workshop is gonna do a dance exhibition, as well as Stars on Broadway. Tony Ann's gonna bring her group of singers at one point, Tony Ann Butler. She just has a great group, and so that should be fun. We're gonna have face painter. My grandson happens to be a really good artist, and he's 12, and he's stepped up and volunteered to do that, and he's been practicing. It's really, I think we're gonna have a lot of fun. We're trying to get a lot of things for the community. We're also gonna be able to, some of the bars are gonna put out a bar on the street, and they'll, people will be able to, within the area, they'll be able to have beverages and food on the street. So that's kind of a new thing, and we're looking for that to really bring a lot of people down. So there's a lot of things that we're doing with, if you look at the list of sponsors, we have more sponsors than we've ever had. So it's been, it's been really great, and everybody is all excited about that. We also have our ongoing informational seminars. Travis Stockman is gonna be giving a seminar on trademarking and intellectual property, which is what he does. He's great. So we keep doing those. We have one or two a week. That's a breakfast seminar, I think. And then we just kind of keep giving information to people. That's our business, is to help business. So that's what we're trying to do. We also are continuing the member videos that actually Eric Donaldson is doing, and that's been very successful. So people are able to, for $50, they'll get a whole video that they can put, we put it on our website, and they can use it anywhere they want. So it's been really successful and helpful to our businesses to build them. And anything that you want to see, you can go to Facebook, follow us on Facebook, go to our website, and you'll see all the events listed. You can sign up for anything you want to sign up for. You can sign up to join if you're not a member. And just remember, oh, the golf outing, of course. This is the, Jeff, that's, there he is, is coming up, and Jeff will talk about that, August 11th. And just remember to shop local.
Great. Thanks, Paul.
Do you want to have Jeff for now?
Would I sit down?
Did you play golf today?
Yes.
What gave it away?
Thank you very much.
How's the knee?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board. Thank you, Polly, for queuing it up for me. I'm here to talk about our Lindbrook Mayor's Golf Outing. They can zero in on the QR code. We're honoring Dr. Paul Lynch, our Superintendent of School, Cindy Schreiner, and Johnny McGories. And we have a terrific committee this year, a lot of participation from the Chamber of Commerce. And Polly gave the date. It's August 11th, and it's at Inward Country Club again. And we have an overflow course of the Seawain Country Club because we didn't want to put out a morning shotgun like last time and have it get backed up, so we're using Seawain. And the spots there, with limited number of spots, are going fast, and we need you all to sign up online. And again, I'll hold this up, the QR code. It's also John Wright on the Village website, also, I understand. And we, we're looking for an outstanding day, and we have a lot of new things, and we're gonna have a very good going of it that day. And the participation to date has been very good, so we need people to sign up because the limited spots are going fast, especially if you want to take a change of pace and go to the Seawain Club. We, we're running out of slots there. You can sign up as a foursome. We also need some more, there's opportunities, and it's online for sponsorship besides the foursome sponsorship. We have pin flags, tees, we have Beat the Junior, we have great cooperation from the pro, Mike Girasi from the PGA Store over in Westbury, and he's bringing two outstanding junior players. Instead of, most tournaments are Beat the Pro, it's Beat the Junior Player. And we have a junior player at the Seawain Club, and we have a junior player, one male, one female, at the Inward Club. And we have another pro from the PGA Store coming out that day to assist. And they bring a lot of prizes, and we have some good support out of the PGA Store. They're very good to this outing. They don't do a lot of outings, but they like the mayor, and they like this outing, and they've been agreeable in the past five years to support us. If there's any questions, I'm Jeff Greenfield, I'm Eric Rode across from McDonald's. My staff is always available to answer any questions. If there's no sponsorship shown online, we invent a sponsorship. You bring us the money, we'll make a sponsorship, whatever you want. Okay? And again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for your support, and we look forward to an exciting night that night.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you for all your help.
Good talking.
Next on the agenda, leave the fire department out, they might be here later on. Request, Temple Amahad wants to have a parade block party from 4 to 7 on June 18th. They've had this in the past. I don't have an issue with it. Is there any questions? Oh, you're up there.
I'm up there.
Just there, I wasn't there. No issues, right?
No questions? All right. Yeah, we've done this in the past. It's been no, no problems at all. It's just an annual, it's more or less an end-of-the-year school party for their pre-K.
Okay.
It's publicly funded pre-K, so.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. So you have anything else on the agenda?
Wednesday, tomorrow, West End had asked to close Clark Avenue between 9 and 11. It's their 100th anniversary, centennial of West End School. They're doing a tree planting, and I was invited as an alumni, and as an alum, rather, and the mayor and the board have also been invited if they could stop by at any time. It's between 9 and 11 tomorrow.
Very nice of the invitation.
I think 9:30 kicks off.
Thank you. Thank you to the school board for allowing us to come. I don't have a problem with that. Any questions on shutting down Clark?
No.
And that was for like an hour and a half or something like that?
It says 9 to 10:45, so.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, we'll do it with the police.
So moved. Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Good. Thank you. Having a tree planting today in right Phil?
Next on the agenda is request from the Fire Department, request permission to utilize Bryce Park and Recreation Center for the, and for a car show. Fire Department, in conjunction with Nassau County firefighters, the Operation Wounded Warrior Committee, request permission to use Bryce Park and Recreation Center for their annual, excuse me, Wounded Warrior benefit. It'll take place September 20th from 3 to 9. And we also want the Recreation Center the night before, as well as during the day on Saturday for the required setup. And additionally, they want the, the committee is requesting the use of the field for a car show from 11 to 3. Keith, you see? You got any of this? Want to come down and talk to us a little bit, do you?
Field? Put the cars in the field?
I have it.
Are you guys?
No, not on the turf.
Oh, okay.
Right, got Rob all upset here, just keeping the cars going on the turf.
No, on the field.
Wherever the cars are going?
On field day.
Okay.
Around the clay area in the outskirts.
Okay. And as far as the time and availability, is that an issue?
No.
It's all penciled in, all done?
It's all penciled in, it's all set.
All right. And there's also something else down on here is they're gonna be 125th anniversary. I understand they're pushing it back until next year, to the 26th, 2026. Will they be using Bryce Park for that also?
Mm-hmm.
That's nothing in here that I say for that.
Have the use of Bryce Park for the celebration and trophies afterward. Last sentence.
Oh, yeah, I see it now, yes. I don't have it highlighted. All right. So we'll plan on using that. I know it's a year away, but get the date there, on June 27th.
Yes, thank you.
I believe it's in the evening. Parade?
Well, it's gonna be a big parade, I understand, for the fourth, the whole Fourth Battalion.
Parade and drill, down 26th.
All right. So you're good, Keith, thank you.
Thank you.
So this should be, they're hosting 125th anniversary of their existence, and we're looking to host a parade on Saturday, 27th, 2026. And I will tell, they're also asking about the Hawthorne Track, that we have an agreement with Village Valley Stream, that the village will be able to utilize the tower on Hawthorne and Valley Stream. We're gonna join, we're gonna repair it and be able to use it, and it'll definitely be done by that time. In fact, they're supposed to start this week. So motion to approve on both.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Okay. Persent to Lodge is, wants to use Bryce Park, that place, I think we need another park.
We do.
Persent to Lodge, 2344, they'd like to bring back their annual family picnic, and any available Saturday or Sunday in August. Anticipate about 100 people, 325. Keith? Sorry, Keith, have you sit down? The date stayed here from now, just asking, did they contact you yet?
Yes, we gave them three dates.
Oh, they gave them three days. So they'll get that. All right. And you'll be able to work that out?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is this bid award for the structure, pool structure.
You get the, yeah.
Oh, Knights of Columbus? Yeah. Thanks. Oh, yeah, that's the header on. June 29th, 11 to 4, car show in the real parking lot, barbecue in the real lot, and wine tasting. Is there one relaxed parking? Is that what's going on here? Chief, did you look into this? Do you know anything about this?
Yeah, sorry, there was an addendum on here, so it's not in the original minutes. Yeah, it was a request from the Knights of Columbus on Hempstead Avenue, St. Mary's Lodge, and they had two events they wanted in mind. They had a barbecue and a car show. What they asked was that we relaxed parking. That's really not a problem because the timed parking is not enforced on the weekends. It's, it's between 8 and 4. It's really to stop commuters from parking on the streets, on the side streets. So I told them that wouldn't be a problem at all. However, they asked for a police presence. I will not hesitate to have the guys walk through here and there, but we can't assign anybody there unless they, that's, it's private property, they need to have their own security force for that.
Okay.
But we, you know, as I said, if we're not busy, I'm sure guys will stop in and just say hi.
Do a walkthrough, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
No.
No.
And they got a range date here, is July 13th. All right. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll go to the bid award for the pool shade structure, and we have a bid of $78,660. This is gonna be paid by the $75,000 grant that we got from Brian Kern. And we also looking into the option of the new playground equipment? Are we, Phil?
Yes.
Well, this, which I think it's time to get new equipment, but do we have, I'll wait for you to come down to the mic.
And we, that was a bid for the shade structure, so we all put out a, what is that?
Trying not to. I can't keep my eyes above the levels.
Suck shit in.
Turn the lights down.
It picks up the black. It picks up the black of the turf. I need my transition glasses now.
It's got my black shirt on. I had my choice.
I'm gonna go get my sunglasses.
Very floral-like, I guess, right?
All right.
So we had an alternate bid on this for replacement of piece of play equipment in the younger playground at Bryce.
Yeah.
We have two new pieces, newer pieces. One of the middle dates back to before we did the playground, you know?
Right, yes. It's a little older piece, it's been painted.
It's a little more metal. We want to get a, one that's a little more safer for the small kids. The unit, I'm pretty familiar with the one that we're specking out.
Okay.
From Little Tykes, and I think it'd be good.
So this will be just for?
Something we can install. Everything here is a DPW to install.
This is just one piece of equipment, is the $11,000?
Correct.
And the surface will be repaired and everything else that?
We still have the rubber mats down, yes. We can work within the rubber mats we have.
It's definitely need of repair or replacements.
Yeah. That one piece is getting hard to maintain. The slide's actually wearing out down to the structure. It's got a lot of, a lot of feet on those over the years.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.[1753.11]
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright, great, thanks Phil.
Yeah.
And that was the bid to Northeast Recreation.
Yeah.
Uh, next on the agenda for six A, I'll ask Council Leo.
Good evening, mayor and board. Section two twelve, uh, dash one point one of the Lumbrough.
It's a public hearing, right?
Yes.
And we open the public hearing at seven thirty-one, thank you.
Section two twelve, thank you mayor, section two twelve, uh, dash one point one of the Lumbrough Village Code deals with repair and maintenance of sidewalks, curbs, paths, and public thoroughfares. What tonight's proposed amendment would do would be to codify a pre-existing notice requirement into our code. And let me explain background of this and how this pertains. If someone was ever going to file a lawsuit against the municipality for a tripping hazard on a sidewalk, say, which would be the most, most common item. Uh, the village would have to have received notice prior to that occurrence, within a reasonable time to fix that, or else no lawsuit exists. It's a notice requirement within the statute. What we're doing tonight is codifying, in the strongest of terms, that such notice has to be a written notice to John Giudano, the village administrator at Village Hall. There was some case law, um, in some of the outlined jurisdictions of emails to, you know, an assistant at DPW, et cetera. This, none of this occurred to Lumbrough, and the courts were finding that was adequate notice. So what we're doing, in conjunction with NICOM's recommendation, is codifying it, that that notice has to come in via writing to the village administrator in Village Hall. Note that cities, townships, and villages are treated differently under the New York State Code. Villages actually have some additional protections that both cities and townships don't have. And this is sort of utilizing that, um, to its fullest extent and putting it into our code, which is the, the written requirement right to the village administrator. Any questions?
Questions?
Does, uh, that need to be in writing, does it have to be brought in by person or can it be mailed in?
It can be mailed in, but it has to be to Village Hall, to the village administrator. Trustee Bacio, I know you are a litigator extraordinaire, I feel like you're dying to answer questions.
No, I, I think he answered, asked one of the questions and how it comes in, so e, so by mail, regular mail or email?
That's cool.
I was gonna say, can it come by email to the village administrator? No. So it has to be a letter either mailed or hand-delivered to?
We're taking advantage of that as to its fullest extent, and it has to, it has to come into the village administrator.
It makes sense, because emails can get
Correct.
You know, pushed into spam, and it's not?
There's gonna be a proliferation of the adoption of this, um, this addition to the statute across the state as per NICOM pre-creation of a month or so ago. That's what drove this, NICOM came out with this and recommended it, and, you know, John and myself were all over.
I know the county has also similar type of, like if you hit a pothole and you blow your tire out, there's no record of it beforehand, you call up, it's on you.
Yeah, you know, to get into the history of it, they, in, with the city of New York, there were whole companies that alls they did was survey streets and submit photos and surveys of potholes into the city. So if you were gonna sue the city for tripping in a pothole, it was inevitably in there because they got a corporation, that's all, that's all they did. And it was funded by the New York State Trial Lawyers Association, so.
Shocking.
I wish I could say I was making it up, but I'm not, yeah. And I wish I could say it never took advantage of it, but.
This is a public hearing, has anybody had any comment? Screen to.
Jeff Greenfield, uh, where my other hat is an insurance agent, and as insurance consultant for the village, it's an outstanding idea that I'm sure your insurance carrier would appreciate. I also wanna call to the board's attention that it, there is presently a class action lawsuit going on in the town of Hempstead, where, uh, they're bringing action against the town for not enforcing their ordinance above and beyond the prior notice, and they're going after certain municipalities also. Now, different than in, uh, New York City, there are, uh, law firms that are foiling the three-one-one records where someone calls to complain about a hazardous sidewalk condition, and then they're contacting and sending them, uh, the law firms are sending the complainants a bilingual letter encouraging them to start a lawsuit. So, this is what we see in the insurance industry and what's going on there. Years ago, you were proactive and you held the landlords responsible to the curb. And now, I think this is, uh, another good remedy to protect the taxpayers of the village and the insurance company for the village. Thank you.
Anybody else comment?
I'm, I'm just not sure, I'm, I'm not sure if, if this was included, you were talking about, like, not just the sidewalks, but like the trees and things like that, because I was actually gonna say something. In my neighborhood, I'm in New Yorkshire section, and I walk every morning, and there, every time, this time of year, everything's overgrown. And there's actually one place that's really dangerous, is when you come on Surry where it turns into red, that curb right there. Those trees are like, you'd have to be a foot tall to be able to walk anywhere on that sidewalk. So, it's a curve, and people are walking this way, and you step into the street to get around, and it's kinda dangerous.
Write a letter.
To John.
And there's another one, but that's the worst.
Polly, Polly brings up a good point, in that, um, I think it would serve the public well just to reiterate within the statute that the homeowner is in charge of the maintenance of their sidewalk and the trees as well, in front of their house, specifically in the utility strips as well. That liability falls to the homeowner, the adjacent homeowner, or property owner, in the, in the case of the business. So, it's the homeowner for those streets that you're talking about that are required. The village can certainly send somebody over, you know, and the village has the authority to take something down in an emergency situation, and I could go on and on regarding that, but, um, what, what this does is take, it takes advantage of the uniqueness of the village, and I don't wanna say it's a discrepancy, but there is some allotment within the New York State statute giving, giving villages more leeway, and we're, we're hopping all over that here.
Okay, any other comments? I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Tom. Next on the agenda is six A. Proves local law, chapter prior notice, this is, uh, no, it's six B, isn't it? Yeah, six A, six B, open public hearings at seven thirty-nine. Public hearing under Village Code two-one-two, dash one point one, at which time the board will take proof of unreasonable dangerous conditions of sidewalks, curbs, et cetera, continues to the properties set forth below, and determine, excuse me, uh, determine whether the conditions of said need to be repaired by the owner of said properties upon failure to do repair, that the village will do so at the cost they're unassessed against of said properties. One sixty-nine Atlantic Avenue, one thirty-six Charles Street, four hundred Sunrise Highway, and twenty-two Scranton Avenue. Is anybody here from those addresses? So then I'll make a motion to so move.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Alright. On favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing at seven forty. Next on the agenda is staffing. This is from John. Board has requested to prove all personnel actions as per the attached police Diana Reddits, neighborhood aide, twenty hours Caitlin Pulaski, um, summer clerk, building department Kristen Nugent, existing provisional clerk typist, convert to clerk typist, Justice Court Brianna McConnell, summer clerk, and recreation Lily Vent, Ventimiglia, Renee Mouski, and Erin McCool, existing at twenty-nine, twenty-nine dollars and twenty-nine and fifty cents per week to extend to a thirty-five hour a week health insurance waiver on file. Any questions?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Eight, sixteen Melrose, request for demolition approval. Assistant said there's no issues here, and he, they're good to go, any questions on the demolition? Motion to approve?
Wait.
Can I make a comment?
Oh, sure, sure, come on down, I'm sorry.
Good evening, um, I live at twelve Melrose, John and Elaine Venza.
Your name?
John and Elaine Venza, twelve Melrose, we're right next door.
Yes.
Uh, do we get notice of all the stuff that's going to happen? I just happened to be reading the board minutes, minutes, and saw that
Usually they send out letters to members.
We had, we, we see no letter.
Mr. Staff will come down.
I'll, I'll wait a little.
Okay. I really don't have questions yet.
Sure, hold on, give me one second. Uh, the issue is of a demolition permit, it's more of an administrative lack. There's a lot more procedures that still have to go along, however, the building permits go along. This application will be subject to variances, uh, this is the building by a hundred, so if you'd be notified of a, everybody in a two-hundred-foot radius will be notified that there'll be a public hearing for that. They propose on, uh, construction of the house, one point three percent watered and thirty-five percent. So there'll be like two variants that go on the property. There'll also be a notice posted for the architectural review board, uh, for the finishes on the property, could just give you a simple outline with their proposal, they're going to take down the house, pretty much build a front porch house, two-story, fits in with the character, the, uh, normal first floor, three bedroom, double floor. But you'll be notified of everything. This is not a notice to neighbors, uh, just getting pre-approval, what's this demolition permit, is being completely required, get all their other approvals, then I can issue it.
Okay, perfect.
So, nobody was notified of anything, this is just being presented to you, and you had no problem with the design of the building?
No, this is just preliminary approvals from this board, if they get all their other approvals, then I can issue a demolition.
Because the coverage of the lot, their one percent?
One point three percent graded in the thirty-five percent.
Okay, alright, that they need.
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's all this board is doing?
Yes, just giving me the power to issue a demolition permit if they get all their other approvals, and we have a complete application.
That's why you said it was good to go to the next stage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, well, the next step would be, okay, let me just step up.
Yes.
The next step after this is they will go in front of the Board of Zonal Appeals, that's held in the evenings. You'll receive notice of, of that, since you would put the two-hundred-foot radius of your neighborhood.
Seventy. There's only seventy.
Well, you'll get certified, well, you'll get certified now.
There's no drive there or anything.
You gotta be notified.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Brian, for them, that would be their time to express their concerns about the layout and everything else?
Yes, everything would have to be presented at that time.
They wouldn't present it before that?
What's that?
They couldn't present, see it before that?
Well, anytime, I don't have the actual varies, they can come up, this paperwork is in my department. Uh, they chose to come down, so they can just look at that paperwork on the, the foil act, they are permissible to see whatever is in my office. It also, when the variance, uh, application goes out, it's noted that you can come down and review the documentation to be more familiar before the BZA hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
But do, do we get to come to a BZA meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a perfect, you said before or against the?
Okay, probably.
Okay.
Cause I looked over the pictures, I'm just concerned on one issue.
We have one issue to really, I'll show you, we have the
Brian, Brian, just so they know, when typically are BZA meetings held?
What's that?
When typically, so they have an idea.
The hearings are on the, uh, third Thursday of the month, and we, the notice will go out, uh, it's no more than twenty, no less than ten, so they will receive it most likely about a week and a half prior to the hearing being.
And they will get letters?
Yes.
They'll be notified, certified now.
Yes, it's, the neighbors will get certified now.
And is this application set to go to after tonight, to go to, um, the BZA, or is there, are you still waiting for more information? So they shouldn't think like next week they're getting a notice? It's not prepared yet for them to come to the BZA?
I wanted to get this procedure done first before I start setting up the variance application. So it's probably going to be about a month and a half after before it even goes to the BZA. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Now, Brian, with this, so no demolition can be done until they get all their other approvals?
Until everything is one hundred percent approved, then I will work on the demolition completion of it, and then I'll issue it out. Not gonna be issued out until it's one hundred percent completed.
And then, is it, is it only lot size coverage will be the variance that they're gonna be looking for?
Uh, the, the, the variances would include the frontage, because it's on a forty-foot frontage, one fifty-five is required as per code, but it's, it's not a self-created hardship, it's a pre-existing lot. It requires fifty-five hundred square feet of lot area, where it has four thousand, it's on forty by a hundred. So it'll be subject to those two variances and exceeding the lot coverage by one point three percent. So, it would be require three variances for approvals.
Okay, and now, would it still need the variances for, uh, frontage and lot size if they said weren't going to exceed lot coverage?
Yes, it would, uh, it, anytime you demolish a property, you're gonna have to build it into conformity of all the regulations in the zoning code.
Present codes.
The present code.
That one the house was built.
Right, exactly.
So technically, they really can't build anything there without a zoning approval?
Exactly, yes. Unless they've owned the house prior to nineteen eighty-six in single and separate ownership, then they'd be permissible to do whatever they want on the property. But once you purchase it after nineteen eighty-six, you're subject to all the zoning codes that are in the code.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for that, I was looking down. Let's see, so we're on nine A, correct? This is, uh, Arbor Day Foundation for Mr. Healy. The village received notice of an award of funds for tree planting and tree giveaway in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The grant award includes funding for purchase of twenty larger trees and a hundred and fifty smaller sized trees for the community giveaway. The grant also has developed to help defer the cost for two years of maintenance for care of the trees and planting in the public space. Any questions? Mr. Healy, do you wanna talk or anything on this?
Sure.
I know you wanna talk about trees, so.
He just wants to show his tie again.
I'm not looking up, once again, I'm blinded from his tie.
That's it. So this Arbor Day grant, uh, the Arbor Day Foundation, I've been discussing with them about two years now, and, uh, it came to fruition. And part of this was, we also have a community organization here who's willing to participate in it, Frack Group, which is right on Broadway in Stotterman, um, and they will come out that day to plant with us for a few hours, and, uh, it'll be a really nice project. Particularly like the, the funding we got for the community tree giveaway, look forward to doing that in October for a hundred and fifty trees. We'll advertise it, and it should be a pretty exciting event.
How long's the tree list now, do you know?
How long?
How many residents are on the tree list?
Well, we just about concluded the spring planting, um, we planted probably a hundred and twenty-five trees this year.
Okay.
So, right now it's probably about thirty or forty long.
Okay.
By the fall, we'll have easily, uh, be in the hundred again.
Alright, so when do these trees gotta come in?
These trees will be for the October project, these, these trees. Um, there'll be more for your private property ones, if you want a tree for your yard, uh, this'll help.
On my property?
If you like a tree, if you like a tree.
Well, they'll give it, put it right on your property.
Well, you come and pick up the tree that day, we'll have the tree giveaway, and it'll be a nice container-sized tree.
Oh, it's one of those little trees?
No, no, you got a fair amount of money.
What's the big trees?
The big trees will be one of the golden burlap trees, uh, two, two-and-a-half inch caliber.
Okay.
So that, you're gonna make that, something about party ones, very, very nice for the trees, what's that?
Phil has his own little giveaway trees.
And my own giveaway trees, these will be other giveaway trees.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Thanks for getting the grant.
Just one question on the grant, and actually, this is probably a question for Jeff. Jeff?
I'm sorry.
So this grant involves a volunteer component, component, where I guess people from this Frack Group will be helping you plant trees?
Yes.
Right, do we have an insurance concern with that?
That was in here, proof of insurance, and, uh, what are your complaints on the, uh?
So the, the company has
We should get a certificate of insurance from that group.
Okay, they'll have to
They need the village as an additional language.
Name the village as an additional language here.
Okay.
W2, proof of, W, yeah.
I think we took care of a couple of the courses.
W9?
Right, okay.
Insurance?
Phil, if you have any questions on the Senate, I'll let you.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, we're good, alright.
Thank you.
Big sunny gender is 9B, and ratification of grant applications for the hockey rink. This is a grant that was, well, we have to vote on the grant, but this, one of the grants is going to Laura Gillen. This is $1,035,000. The police, actually, the police department was behind this too. Funding would be used to acquisition and install installation of an all-weather canopy equipment and lighting over the outdoor facility currently used as a roller hockey rink at the village's Grice Park, expanding the use and program, offering the facility and enabling it to be used year-round. The project is appropriate use of taxpayer funds because it will improve the accessibility of the community infrastructure for all Nassau residents of Nassau County provided access to a safe, protected facility, and help bring more people to the area by expanding opportunities available at the facility. In addition, Lemberg Police Department seek to use the facility to run a year-round community outreach program throughout youth sports and increasing the opportunity for local law enforcement and interaction with the residents. John, thank you for doing this, and Brian, thanks for being a part of this. This is another asset for Grice Park, and I think it'd be something that'd be well-received by everyone, to be able to do multi-sports in there besides hockey. This is also, it's going to be included in the, well, the application, we didn't put in for the police cars again, do we? They refused that, correct?
Uh, correct.
And the grant standard refused.
Right.
So we'll try this, alright? So, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next is New Webmaster, Lucid Logic. Any questions? For New Webmaster, no questions?
Nope.
I looked into it, it was pretty good.
I, I just have one insurance concern, that they should have side liability insurance and name the village as an additional language in the contract.
Everyone agrees with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve then.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And 10B. This telephone order, this is a company spyglass group, they ordered telecommunications services, and seek cost recovery and service elimination and cost reduction and recommendations. We've done this in the past, correct, John?
Yes.
The same company?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then 10C, street light wiring. Is it replace the new lights, new lights on Peninsula? Finally getting to the bottom of this?
So, this is a request for some funding, we have our lighting project coming up on Peninsula Boulevard, continuation of it.
This is being paid by CHIPS money, not village money.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so this would be a continuation of the wiring we did, we have an opportunity before the lights come in to replace some of the older wiring that's feeding the lights now, and then we'd have a completely new circuit from Hempstead Avenue to Ocean Avenue on the south side, which would be, over the, over the years, we've done it, and this is the last missing piece before the lights get delivered. That'd be great to have, and then we can build off that even more. The polls are due in, this is probably now been pushed back to about an August project for the pole installation, there's just been a delay in getting the poles. Electrician's ready to go, we get the wires in.
This delay isn't because of tariffs, is it?
I think it was originally because of supply chain.
Okay.
The pole was ordered before the tariff situation came up.
Any questions?
Nope.
No.
Second?
Great favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Phil. I don't think I need you now, I think, no. 10D, recreation instructors. I want a table this one, 10D, please. Talk about work session. Police Department equipment. This is a voucher from the advance. Brian, this is, Police Department, Brian, remove police car tires, tablets, tablets in the car?
Yeah, we've had tablets in the car, that was from a grant from Mr. Gaylor.
Congressional grant.
That we had gotten, the original grant. They're now coming due, a lot of them are getting older, we use them a lot, we've actually reduced most of our paper because of it, and made data collection a lot easier. And we were advanced from the congressional office to, for any, any needs that we had, we put a few needs in, and they granted us the 28,000 and change, 28,746 for, to replace the tablets that we've had, had about six years, five years already. So, it was a replacement of the ones that have been worn and used.
And then, you replaced cameras downstairs?
Yeah, that was an emergency project, we, our interior cameras stopped working one day, we got them back on, then they were out. I used asset forfeiture money to pay for that.
And it just was just, one day it just stopped?
Yeah, well, they were 12 years old, so it was time, we won't borrow time with them. Well, we actually added one more camera that actually gets an entrance of anybody into the station, especially at night, it's a good safety measure.
Everything's so costly.
Yes, it is.
Any questions?
Nope.
No.
Okay, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next is 10F, we've had a, this is from Travelers Indemnity Company, we had a garbage truck on fire. We got, I think, $180, $180, what is it, John, $180 from the, what did we get from the insurance company?
$143,000.
I like $180 better. $143, and we could take the chassis and switch chassis around and try to do other things, and steel needs to be repaired on the chassis, and that would be about $185,000, and to buy a new truck would be $145,000, $245,000. So, you have a 13-year-old truck that you're putting $185,000 into, we'll have to buy a new garbage truck at $245,000. I have my opinion, any feedback?
I mean, I don't think it's worth, you know, it's a lot of money to put into a 13-year-old truck. I mean, I don't feel babies is garbage trucks.
Phil, you want to kind of give us your opinion on this, and what's been your experience, going, which one rattle or another?
About six weeks ago, there's a truck caught a fire, 2013, international, one of our standard garbage trucks. So we got it evaluated, and the insurance company saw some of the chassis being compromised by the heat of the fire, so they gave us a nice turnaround. John was able to help negotiate a good, good insurance settlement, so the trucks are, we have an opportunity to purchase a new truck for about 60% coverage from the insurance claim, which would be great. Like you said, a 13-year-old truck with, I should have gotten it, but it's going to have at least 10,000 hours on it by now, if not more. The trucks go up, new trucks, cost of trucks go up about $15,000 a year, so we have, I think we have a great opportunity to get a truck that will last us another 25 years. I hope that would be a support, we try to keep our garbage trucks either as full-time or standard spares for up to 25 years. I don't know, you know, this truck would, still going to be a full, it was going to be a full-time, now it'll be a spare, and it'll just be sitting around, and I hope we, to rebuild it properly would be expensive, and as you said, put $185,000 into a 13-year-old truck, when another $65,000, $70,000, in comparison to that, we're almost at the cost of the truck.
And even if you repaired the truck at that rate, what kind of warranty are you getting on the repair work anyway?
You get no-
Nothing, right?
It's steel, and we still have a 13-year-old motor with at least 10,000 hours on it, and then high maintenance costs going forward as they get older.
Okay.
Like the rest of us.
And the amount of the new truck in 10 years, or even when that one goes, is going to be way more than $245,000?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be up in the 300 range easy by that time, yeah.
It'd be wiser to spend the extra money and get a brand-new truck in the last 20, 25 years.
Now, the trucks have still about a nine-month back order on them, it's better than the three-year back order that we had on these trucks, but I'm being told by the manufacturers about a nine-month back order to get a, to get a truck received, so.
And we have a spare right now that can take the place of it, so.
Right, the service won't be interrupted?
I'd make the recommendation to get a new vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you.
Aye.
On favor? Okay.
I'm just suspicious that John isn't having any objections against something Phil wants.
John said he could get his work clothes out and help Phil fix the-
Actually have two spares.
Yeah, next on the agenda is the bills. What, I missed it, skip one?
I think there was something else.
Oh, wait, it is transfer months, we did have that out too. I moved it right along. Okay, license and permit for software, this is, the board is there, is requested to authorize transfer of $4,000 from the A3620 dot 432 Building Department Computer Cost to A81325 dot 432 Computer Cost to accommodate the purchase of the license and permit software. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then the bills.
I move that the bills listed on the abstract of order of vouchers be paid as soon as they have been duly ordered by the majority.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And good and well, Phil. Emery, I'm sorry.
Oh, you would like me to start? Okay, thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to thank all the residents for coming out on Memorial Day weekend. We had some great, you know, activities or gatherings, I should say, you know, from the Patriots Night and fireworks, to the parade the next day, you know, it's always great to see the amount of people that come out and, you know, remember those servicemen that really allowed us to be here and be free. It's great to see, you know, it's very much appreciated from the police department to the fire department, the rec department, the DPW, you know, the Patriots Committee, you know, all the hard work that goes into it, but I think it's the best to see the amount of kids that are there, the amount of kids that are learning or understanding, and I really do look forward to seeing all the residents out. I also want to take time to congratulate all the graduates, it's graduation season, you know, the college graduations already happened, but our high school graduations are going on, middle school, kindergarten, preschool, you know, it's a great time, it's a great time, these kids are rolling into summer, and summer might be the best time of the year for everyone. But I hope they all have a great summer, I hope they look forward to their next adventures. We are all proud of them in the community, to see everyone move forward, and I also want to take time to wish all the fathers a happy Father's Day, a day late. I hope you guys had a great day yesterday.
Oh, thank you, Emery, you did have a good time.
Good. Did you get pampered, taken care of?
Excuse me?
Did you get pampered?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if you still barbecued and did all of that?
That was really funny.
By your grandkids, spoils, spoils.
That's outside heat on that one.
I know, I'm old, but yeah.
Thank you. I just want to thank, I mean, Antonia's not here tonight, I do want to thank her and the rec department. We went to the, one of the dance recitals past weekend, and, you know, what an amazing event, to see the kids up there, you know, you know, for the, for the different dance events that they did, the amount of children, the amount of people who came to see them, you know, in talking with Antonia, out of the two sessions of the dance recital, it was over 1,400 people attended that. So just, you know, an amazing program, you know, that she's grown over these years, you know, just a truly amazing event, to see all these kids perform, and, you know, have, you know, have a great time up there, and it was really, really nice to see, really nice to see the support of, you know, parents, grandparents, friends, neighbors, whoever attended for this, so it was, it was a beautiful event. Robin from the library asked me to speak about a couple of items. First, they have an annual report to the community based on the activity in the past year. The library currently has 10,238 cardholders. In the past year, they had 41,098 ebook, e-magazines, and audiobook total checkouts. 602 museum passes were borrowed, their total circulation was 83,658 items. Last year's summer reading involved 485 children, 79 young adults, and 98 adults had all registered. They had almost 20,000 separate Wi-Fi users for the Wi-Fi service they offered. They had 357 new Nassau Digital Doorway users, and 1,407 new total users, and there were a total of 1,039 teen volunteer hours at the library. There were 449 programs last year at the library, with total attendance of 9,188. So, a lot going on, and a lot offered at the library, and, you know, just wanted to mention along with that, you know, with the summer approaching us, if you're, you know, looking for things for your children to do, the library, you should have received the library lowdown newsletter, the library has a ton of activities for the summer, you know, the majority of them are free for residents, so please look to take advantage of them, whether it's movies at the, at the library, or different events that they're holding. One of the things that they did last year, where they were involved in last year, that was very excessive, successful, was the offering of discount passes. So through Nassau Library Service, we get discount passes to Adventureland, Adventure Park, and Splish Bash. So for example, for Adventureland, the tickets are $31.50, and that's for everybody, for a kid from two up, while at the park, those tickets can cost you upwards of $50. At Adventure Park, the tickets are $39 with the discount, and they can, at the park, they're either $59 or $69. And then Splish Bash, they will give you a code at the library to use for a discounted ticket, and with that code, you can get tickets at 40, almost $45, and they can be up to $75 if you buy them at the day of the event at Splish Bash. So, you know, for Adventureland, Adventure Park, it'd be cash only for the tickets at the library, so if you need them, please contact the library, they will get more in if they sell out, but it is a great discount ticket, and Splish Bash, they will give you a code. And then, the water playground is now back at the library with the summer, well, supposedly summer, with all the rain and cold weather we've been getting, I don't know about that yet, but the water playground is back, so for all the little kids who enjoyed that, please take a look, and take a look at the different programs again that the library has to offer. Thank you, and enjoy your summer.
Thank you. Tiffany, Dave?
Rob? Yeah, everybody mentioned pretty much what I wrote here, so definitely the Memorial Day, it was nice to see that there were more people at the Doughboy event this year than prior year, so that was encouraging, and we always encourage people to come down and support our veterans, especially with the Doughboy Ceremony. Dance recital was off the charts, it was great, really, really enjoyed it, so kudos to Antonia and all the people and the staff that put it together, it was a fantastic job. The graduations, my daughter included, I want to congratulate everybody who's graduating this year and moving on to the next phase, we're all proud of you, so the best to all those who are moving on to the next stage of their life. It's kind of tough to wrap your head around, but it goes by quick, so enjoy it. Finally, I'm sure Chief will agree, Chief Palladino, slow down on the roads, especially now, kids are off, they're going to be around, there's a lot of kids out playing, we see them in the, already, I can hear them, I can see them, and we got to be careful on the road, so be careful, have a safe summer, and, you know, have a good time, but obviously, slow it down, please.
Thank you.
Almost nothing left to say. Now, congratulations to, as everybody said, all the kids graduating and moving- Congratulations to, as everybody said, all the kids graduating and moving up to the next chapter in the education, enjoy your summer, and rewrite Bob said, drive safely out there, the kids are going to be out there on the street, sometimes around dusk too, when people rushing home from work and using the side streets, really concentrate on slowing down. I want to recognize Elizabeth Canty here, I think it's a great thing, you know, physical and mental, mental wellness, especially among our youths, is very important, so thank you for your project, hopefully we have back-to-back winners.
Yeah.
Mike Brook, Barcill, for the gold, the gold award. I also want to recognize that were brought to my attention, a couple to, a couple of Limbrook High School baseball players, I'm trying to get the name right, Pialo, Paleshi...
Paolo.
Paolo?
Paolo, please.
Well, actually, all-conference, and Chris Mangieri, all-league, which was a very big honor.
That's great.
So congratulations, and to any of the athletes that, that got things or awards for the students or anything else, congratulations, congratulations to them.
Good. Open it up to the floor, any comments? Mr. Healy?
You're ready to say it, Mr. Dan?
Yeah, sure.
Do I have you?
He really wants to get that tie on.
You talked about the sanitation truck, I just wanted to get approval to declare the truck surplus, so I can motion it out.
Sure. Motion to declare the damaged garbage truck surplus.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great. Anybody else? I just have a statement that I got from the Lucchese family. They said they are writing to the board to bring the attention of remarkable efforts displayed by the Limbrook Police Department, Limbrook Fire Department, Limbrook Medical Company, and Northwell Emergency Health Services for their lifesaving efforts on their mother Jane Lucchese on May fifth. Said the, Mrs. Lucchese had cardiac, was in cardiac arrest, I believe, and that they demonstrated remarkable professionalism and skill as they utilized the AED successfully shocking their mom multiple times and collaborating with the Limbrook Fire Department, Medical Company, and Northwell Services staff to continue lifesaving measures, measures. By the time she arrived at the hospital, their mother was semi-alert and conscious, without any signs of severe oxygen deprivation...
Deprivation.
Despre, say it again.
Deprivation.
Desprivation, deprivation, sorry. This outcome was truly astonishing and speaks volumes about the critical role immediate action plays in such emergency situations. Sadly, while they were grateful for the nine days they had as a family to get together and say their goodbyes, their mother suffered a second cardiac arrest nearly a week later, which resulted in irreversible damage, and she passed away on the fourteenth. Nevertheless, they are immensely grateful to the Limbrook Police Department, the Limbrook Fire Department, and Northwell Emergency Health Services staff for invaluable gift of their time with her, and those members are, from the police department, Fire Department was Captain Cacciatore, Second Lieutenant Maria Cacciatore, Ex-Captain James Byrne, Ex-Captain Kathy Bean, Firefighter Jaden Riviere, Riviere, Alyssa Cacciatore, and from the Police Department was Lieutenant Cunningham, Officer Moon, and Officer James, and paramedic David Baez, and EMT Daniel Alfaro. You know, it seems like a lot of members, but it's a village that worked together, because everybody got together and helped this woman, whether to get her to the hospital as fast as possible with the police department, and giving it first on the scene, and the Fire Department coming in and working on it, the family had a little happiness, although it was a very sad occasion, so congratulations, and very proud. With that, no more comments, you got anything else? Take a, we'll adjourn to work session. So moved. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Goodnight, everybody, enjoy your summer.
Aye.